We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the May 11th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on May 19th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with roll call. I'm here. Do you want to go through the...
Yeah, just...Jim?
Yes, here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Kathy?
Kathy, are you there? We can see you. Can we hear you?
Oh, here. Okay, there, here.
All right.
Travis?
Here.
Sunny?
Here.
Sandy?
And Sandy.
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of the April 27th, 2020 minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none here. Jim, do you have any?
No.
Kathy? Do you have any changes to the minutes? Kathy?
I think she's on mute.
How about Sunny? Sunny, do you have any changes to the minutes?
Just a tip for those on the call, if you hold the spacebar, you'll be temporarily unmuted.
Okay, there we go. Unmuted. No, I have no changes.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the agenda. Today's agenda consists of 16 items. Items three through five are on the consent agenda. Six through, looks like 11 would be new items, followed by our standard items at the end of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this morning? Seeing none here in the room. Jim? Kathy? Sunny? Any changes?
No.
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 With that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Consent Agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff Member, or Audience Member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1520, for Mitch Morris, to review a construction equipment sales on the subject property in a general commercial district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1520, with conditions. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-07, for Black Hills Energy, to allow a temporary contractor's equipment storage yard in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-07, with conditions. And item number five is Minor Platt, MPL 20-08, for Gordon and Jennifer Sabo, to reconfigure lot lines to create lots one, two, and three of Hideaway Hills subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of Minor Platt, MPL 20-08, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Jim? Any items from the consent agenda?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Sunny?
No.
For all of those sitting in the audience and/or out of the chambers, are there any items that you folks wish to pull from the consent agenda items? Specifically, items three, four, and five on the agenda. Otherwise, we will vote on those with one vote. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's consent agenda.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote by roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Agenda item six is Layout Plan 20-09. The applicant is H&amp;H Land Company Number Two, LLC. The agent is Brian Hammerbeck, and the surveyor is D.C. Scott Surveyors. As you can see on your screen, the site location is St. Germaine Road, just south of Caputa. The applicant's agent, Brian Hammerbeck, applied for Layout Plan 20-09 to combine portions of three lots into one lot in order to create Track D of Hook J addition. On your left on the screen, you'll see the original lots, and on the right, you can see the proposed lot. For ease of description, the subject properties are labeled A, B, and C on the left. First lot, Lot A, is General Agriculture District, consisting of 10.41 acres. Lot B is also Zone General Agriculture District, is 20 acres. And Lot C is Zone General Agriculture District, and it's 60 acres. Proposed Lot D of Hook J addition will also be Zone General Agriculture District, consisting of 40 acres. There is special flood hazard area on the property. It will be vacant of structures, and the proposed access is to be taken off of Derby Lane. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Flood Plane Manager, Register of Deeds, and County Environmental Planner all had comments that are included as conditions of approval. The proposed lot does not, or does appear to meet minimum lot size requirements for a general agriculture district. However, the remaining lots will be below the 40-acre lot size minimum for a general agriculture district, and will need to be rezoned appropriately, or an improved lot size variance will need to be obtained. In addition, the creation of proposed lot will increase density on Derby Lane, and the applicant will be required to improve Derby Lane to Pennington County Road standards or obtain approval of subdivision regulations variance to waive these requirements. And with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots for current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of Layout Plan 20-09 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing up here on the dais. Jim, any questions for staff?
No.
Kathy?
Yeah, I do have one question, and that is about Derby Lane. What, I guess what I'm really interested in is kind of describe the status of that road today, and what it's going to take to upgrade it to meet the standards that will be required. I mean, is it a narrow little dirt trail, and it's going to have to be with shoulders and ditches and gravel? Or, I mean, just kind of give me an explanation of that.
Right. So as it sits today, it's about a 12-foot-wide gravel road. And to improve it to county standards, I believe it would have to go to ordinance 14 standards?
And what is that? Ordinance 14?
I could bring up the list of ordinance 14 standards if you would like.
I mean, just in general, what's going to be required?
I believe that needs to be widened to at least 16 feet. It will require ditches.
Uh huh.
Yep.
And gravel?
And gravel at a minimum, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. How long is it? What's the stretch of road that will be improved?
Let me bring up an aerial of that. One second, please. So if you can see here, this is Derby Lane, takes access off of Dawkins Road.
Uh huh.
And this will be the portion of road that we're talking about improving.
Okay, so what is that roughly?
In distance?
Yeah. Okay, so just...
2,500 feet.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, very good. Thank you.
Sunny, any questions for staff on this item?
No.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Staff recommends approval of Layout Plan, LPL 20-09, with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seven.
Good morning. Cody Sacchar, our Mental Planner. Item set up in is Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-08. It's to allow a contractor's equipment storage yard and a sawmill on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. The applicant is Shad Corp., Cody Shad. The property is 40 acres, Zone Limited Agriculture District. There currently is a construction permit and a mining permit out on the property. For considerations for a Conditional Use Permit, there's five considerations that are looked at. One, the effect of the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity used as already permitted and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. The use of the subject property for a contractor's equipment storage yard could affect the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. The effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant properties and uses predominant in the area. Allowing this Conditional Use Permit could affect the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property in the area. The utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or all necessary facilities are provided. The subject property does have existing utilities, and the access is off Marvin Road. It appears that all utilities, roads, and other facilities are already provided. The off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 310, requires parking or storage for all vehicles used directly in conduct of such industrial use, plus one parking space. It appears there is ample space for parking on the subject property, and that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed Conditional Use, by its very nature, could produce odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations. Reasonable measures should be taken by the applicant to assure the above-listed elements do not reach a level that would constitute a nuisance. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. The main thing that came back was from the city of Rapid City. Their future land use identifies it as rural reserve, which allows single-family residential development on a three-acre lot, and they would not be supportive of contractor's storage or lumber mill. In addition, the access to the property is Marvin Road, is not constructed to accommodate traffic for lumber mill or contractor's equipment storage. In the analysis, the applicant would like to, is requesting the use of a contractor's storage yard. Like I said, he has a mining permit and a construction permit. His mining permit expires, I believe, July or August, and he would like to, if that does expire, to maintain his equipment on the property. The sawmill is for, him and his brother have a contractor's business. They want to approximately 10 trees a year, turn into boards, dry out on the property, and turn into trusses. Contractor's equipment storage yard and sawmill are permitted as Conditional Uses in Limited Agriculture District. Marvin Road is applied to public right-of-way intended for access to six residential lots within Marvin subdivision. The subject property is located at the end of a cul-de-sac. Lots one, two, and lots four and six contain single-family residents and outbuildings. Therefore, this Conditional Use Permit does not appear to be in harmony with the existing land uses in the immediate vicinity. So staff is recommending denial of Conditional Use Permit, CU 20-08.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? No one here on the dais. Jim, do you have any questions for staff on this item?
No.
Kathy?
Okay, yeah, I want to understand the sawmill a little better. Like, for example, the numbers listed, like 10 trees and saw...is that annually? Or is that just a one-time deal? Or, you know, what's the longer-term outlook for the sawmill? And then also, I'd like to understand, even though it's non-commercial, is it for use in the houses that Shad Construction builds? And so then ultimately sold through these new homes? Or is it really just for personal use? And so I'd like to understand that a little better.
So the sawmill, it is, when I talked to him on the phone, he said that roughly 10 trees from California, that he wants to turn into trusses. It would be annually. It's, what he said, would be approximately 50 to 60 trusses a year. So it wouldn't be like coming in and out. And they would be used for the houses that Shad Corp. does build.
I didn't hear the last of that. It'd be used for...
It would be used for the houses that Shad Corp. built.
Built, I see. And so, you know, explain to me again, I mean, I kind of missed it a little bit, you know, why staff is recommending denial?
So staff's recommending denial because with Conditional Use Permits, we look at the surrounding zoning, and in the surrounding zoning, he's at the very end of Marvin Road, and Marvin subdivision has, like, one, two, three, four, five houses, five, six houses on it that are residential, so the use in the area is residential. So adding a contractor's storage yard on a road specifically designed for residential purposes, and the uses in the area didn't, wasn't in harmony?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I want to point out a few things in terms of legal consideration for this commission. One, I think over time, there's become a mistaken idea that, oh, if it's a Conditional Use, we approve it. No. There are specified allowed uses in each zoning district. Those are allowed. Conditional uses are exactly that. They are conditional, and they're conditioned on the approval of this body is...and with that being said, this body has to consider certain factors that are set out in our ordinance. And even though ordinance says you may consider those factors, in fact, under state statute, you shall consider those factors. The five factors that the Planning Department has set out for you must be considered by you each time a Conditional Use is presented to you. And you have to decide, based upon those factors, whether this use is in fact appropriate for this particular area. So I think there's just, for some reason, it seems like all of a sudden Conditional Uses have been perceived as allowed uses, and they're not.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I may have missed something in here. The city future plans is impacting this. Is it within the one-mile or three-mile distance from the city lines? Is that why?
Yeah, it's in their plating jurisdiction, so if it was platted or anything, or annexed, it would need to meet city...
I see.
The yellow line that you see on the presentation right there, that's city limits.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks. I just wasn't sure.
So I just wanted to clarify that. I think we need to get away from the idea that treating these Conditional Uses as allowed uses. They are conditional, and we have to look at whether they're appropriate under those five conditions to the particular area.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Thanks for clarifying that a little bit. When I was reading through this, I'm like typical other people. I'm like, sawmill, no. But after listening to a little bit of this discussion, I mean, is the property owner here, because it sounds to me that these are coming from California, they're custom trusses, probably two to six inches, so it's not something that's highly...when you see trusses, you're thinking of your roof trusses, that's what I was thinking. But these are custom exterior trusses that aren't mass-produced, it's for custom homes.
So the trees would actually come in logs, and he would process them into the boards for the trusses and lay them out on the property to dry. He's not here. He was informed of the Planning Department's decision and recommendation, but he's not here today, no.
Did you happen to know any of the process of what this is? I mean, it's not like a full-blown sawmill.
No.
I'm thinking it's a portable, I'm thinking he's being, without him being here, being told that he has to ask for these permits for, you know, they've got these portable sawmills where they can cut them down to six-by-six posts for your custom. That might be what it is, can come and go. Do you have any information on that?
No, I do not have any specifics on that, no.
Okay. And when do we know what kind of equipment? How much is, you know, is it a bobcat and a dump truck? You know, I mean...
That he's going to store on for the contractor's storage?
Yeah, I mean, normal, no residency of 40 acres, you'd think, is he, you know, just trying to cover his bases after all the mining stuff that he's gone through requires? I mean, how much equipment is it?
From what he told me, is it's mainly his equipment, but then he also mentioned he, other people storing it on the property as well, so.
Further questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So you said Cody's not here today to give us any information, for us to further ask questions and find out what kind of trucks or anything is on that?
Nope. He is not here.
Okay.
Sunny, I didn't hear from you. Do you have any questions for staff on this item before I go to the speaker request forms?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. I do have four speaker request forms for this item. The first one that I have is Russ Brown. Sir, if you'd please come forward, let's just state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Russ Brown. I'm the landowner, just to the southeast. I share the fence line with him. Right now, with his mining, we're dealing with dust like it's crazy. I remember a couple meetings ago, y'all said that you had given him dust control measures. He's taken none. We've got the noise level of the equipment that he's got back down there now, it's hard for us to sit in our family room and even watch TV. It's caused anxiety in my dogs. As far as equipment that's stored, you should see what he's got there now. It's ridiculous. It looks like a junkyard. He's got a big backhoe, he's got a big hoe, he's got, there's a gooseneck flatbed trailer loaded with stuff. He's got pieces of fence laying around, he's got rolls of chain link laying around. It looks like a junkyard, and I can't see where anything else is going to change. What really worries me is when he moved in there, he was given a set of our covenances. One of the main covenances is no commercial property. I've talked to him on several occasions, and he assured me there would be no commercial business. Sure sounds to me like he's trying to make it commercial. He's down on the end of our road, his equipment is destroying our road. We pay for that, the other homeowners, and I, we pay covenants fees every month to cover road maintenance. He's paid nothing since he's been there. He's done nothing but lie to us. One of his big things is, I want to be a good neighbor. Well, he's not being a good neighbor. I invite you out to my place, you can come out and you can look around for yourself. Our house is a light gray with red dust all over it. My wife spends a lot of time in the backyard. It's all covered with red dirt now. It's just, it's a mess, and I really wish you'd consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, sir. If anyone has any questions, I just want them to be able to ask those. Go ahead, Travis.
Mr. Russ?
Yeah.
So is his property in that HOA? So is he supposed to follow all the covenants of the HOA? Did you say...
He is. It is. The place that he bought was actually the original house on the entire property. They owned the whole bill, and then it got split up. It was all family. But that's the original homestead down there, is what he has.
But it is part of the HOA?
Absolutely.
So then you realize you have legal recourse through the HOA?
We do.
Okay. I just want to make sure...
We're hoping it don't come to that.
HOA covenants, we don't enforce. We take them in consideration, but we can't enforce those. But I just wanted to make sure that if he's within that, then you have a little extra support behind you if y'all decided you needed to do something else.
You know, it's mainly the dust and the noise, and, I mean, I had someone knock on my door about a week ago, I guess it was. He was trying to employ him to do some blasting. The main gas line into Rapid City, natural gas comes right through the top of that property. That's a stupid idea. Holy smokes. So I'm not sure what he's planning, but he's not being on the level with anybody.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any further questions for Mr. Brown? Jim?
No, I don't have any.
Kathy?
No.
Sunny?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form that I have for this item is Jessica Smith.
I live on Lot Five.
Go ahead and state your name again for the record, and go ahead, pull that mic down, and then speak into it so the folks at home can hear you as well. Thank you.
I'm short, sorry. I'm Jessica Smith. I live on Lot Five. When you buy a piece of property, you are given the covenants. You know exactly what's in the covenants. It says, "No commercial use, residential use, not to be a nuisance." None of the dirt control has been done since the last meeting that we were at. It gets old dealing with this. The road has been destroyed. Why put gravel on and keep the maintenance when we're going to have more trucks coming up? What is the point? We are looking for you guys to do something. And understand, a sawmill, it doesn't matter, it's going to be commercial use, industrial. He could have bought any other property that was ready to zone this. Any. I can pull up a whole bunch for him. Instead, he bought a residential use. It is residential. Explain to me how that can be changed? If you live by a sawmill or had to deal with commercial trucks, are you going to be happy when you bought a place that had covenants? I don't understand it. So my way of thinking is, he could have bought anything else to meet what he wanted, but he bought this one, and it is residential, in that three-mile mark. I'm done. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Smith?
I just have a comment, and you understand, as we told the other gentleman, we have no control over the covenants, nor can we enforce them, but you can get a civil lawsuit. You know, our interest is in, you know, the zoning and the surrounding use, but your comments are well received. Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Any further questions? Jim? Kathy?
No.
No, I don't really have any more questions. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Sunny?
No.
Okay. We'll go to the next speaker request form. Robert... Okay, we'll go to the next speaker request form. Robert Watts.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Go ahead and state your name again for the...
I've spoken here before.
Go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
A little closer.
State your name for the record and into the mic so we can hear you.
Name, Bob?
Yes. Robert Watts.
Thank you.
I've spoken here before, and nothing has changed. I don't hear real well, so I need you to speak up. I live at 3850 Marvin Road, and that's Lot 2R. If you'll look up at the map, I'll point out my corners, right here and right here. I'm an adjacent landowner to Lot 3R. My property runs right through here. So I'm directly affected by this application for a conditional use permit for contractor equipment and storage and a sawmill. I've lived there since 1999, when I bought it. Been a Marvin Road Homeowners Association member since then. I pay my taxes, I pay my Homeowners Association dues. I've developed my property in accordance with covenants, and I've done some building myself. I had to move my home over and put a permanent foundation under it. I planted trees, built pole barn. I understand people wanting pole barns in a rural environment. Never had a problem with it. I'm not the only long-term resident there. Mark and Pam Wiley have been there almost 30 years. Kathy Wiley Brown has been there closer to 40. The late Van Wiley was there forever, though we lost her a few years ago. And Darren and Jesse Smith have also lived there a long term. Most of the people have a lot of time, a lot of effort in building their homes, and have lived as neighbors and worked to get along. I've been a resident in South Dakota for 60 years, Pennington County for the last 35, 21 years now at 3850 Marvin Road. I worked for the first 15 years out here for FMG Engineering, doing field geological and geotechnical explorations. I'm a registered geologist in the state of Wyoming. There are no credentials like that available in South Dakota. So I know a few things about gypsum and the need to remove it underneath permanent structures. I also know how to build pole barns, and you just drill the holes and place the poles and follow code, and you're all right. The last 20 years, I worked for the South Dakota DOT, Rapid City Region Materials, doing some investigation, working mostly with materials, soils, aggregates, asphalt, and concrete. I know a little something about building roads, which brings us to the Marvin Road. It's a private road. Ever have we received any financial help or maintenance from the county? We maintain it ourself, out of our homeowner dues, when it requires cash, and some of our members chip in with their equipment to maintain it at its level. It's just a basic clay, silty clay road base with a couple inches of gravel on it. So every time it rains, we can get displacement if we're not careful with the amount of weight put on it. Permanent damage could result from overweight vehicles. It's simply not made for it. Okay, I received a letter, a registered letter from Mr. Cody Shad informing me of this meeting and his application for the conditional use permit for storage of contractor equipment and a sawmill. I stayed up front. I'm opposed to it. Marvin Road subdivision is a residential road, and it's residential properties. What he's suggesting is a commercial application. Our road can't stand that. We can't stand overloaded logging trucks bringing in logs. We can't stand the heavy equipment being transported over it whenever they need to transport it, whether it's wet or dry. Can't deal with it. There are answers. This is the first time we've clearly known what Cody Shad wants to do with this property. And it's clearly evident from the outside of the envelope on his return address. He has no plans of building a residence out there. He's got a nice place up on Skyline Drive. We were all hoping to get a neighbor, not somebody who just wanted to use it for a dumping ground for equipment and running a sawmill. I guess that doesn't make any difference to some people. We provide our own maintenance. And like I said, that has to be done quite a bit, especially when it's wet. Wintertime, we have runoff, that provides problems. Luckily, we can do it. The type of usage that he is proposing is inappropriate for this property, for the reasons stated. The road won't deal with it, and doesn't comply with the city of Rapid City's future use plan. I'm basically opposed to the whole idea of a commercial use of this property and his plans and his request for a conditional use permit. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any... Go ahead Sandy.
Yes, sir. My question, well, it's more a point of clarification. One of the other speakers indicated when the land was first purchased by this gentleman, that it was a homestead, which in my mind means there was a house on it, and that it was then replanted. But you're saying that if it, if in fact it were a house, that he's not living in it, he is living elsewhere? Is that true?
It looked to me like he was living at 28 Skyline Drive and has no intention to live at 3800 Marvin Road.
Okay.
He's done no work to remodel or fix up the old house or build a new one. We heard all sorts of explanations about the overexcavation, exceeding the original permit for excavation. It's obvious now why he did that was for this conditional use permit for a storage parking area of contractor equipment and use of a sawmill. I can't understand why you would do it otherwise. And there's no reason to remove all the gypsum just to put up a pole barn.
I understand, sir. You're saying this house is vacant?
The house is. It had fire damage from the last owner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all.
Questions?
Are there further questions for Mr. Watts? Jim, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Kathy?
I don't have a question for the speaker, but I do have a question for the staff again when the time is right.
Cody, do you want to hop back up there and answer the question? There's a question for staff.
Okay.
Go ahead Kathy.
My question is on the zoning. It's not, it's zoned, it's zoned agriculture, is that right? It's not zoned residential or...
It's zoned limited agriculture district, which does allow residences on the property. So there's a difference between use and zoning. The use in the area is residential even though it's zoned for what could be agriculture purposes. The current usage in the area is residential.
So if you look under the ordinance under limited agriculture, then isn't what he's proposing allowable as a use under limited agriculture zoning?
As a conditional use under limited agriculture zoning. But like Michelle stated earlier, we have to, those five criteria needs to be looked at. And if that criteria is not being met, then denial of the request would be, I can't think of the word, appropriate?
Yeah.
Or should be considered.
I need to make sure I understand is that, if this is a use, I understand the distinction between the conditional use and the allowed use, but under limited ag, if you just look at a limited agriculture zoning parcel, isn't what he's proposing allowed use?
No, it's, it's an allowed conditional use. If it was an allowed use where it was just permitted, where, when you look in the zoning ordinance, and sorry, I don't have it in front of me, there's a list of permitted uses and a list of conditional uses. Those permitted uses can be done without any permits or approval or anything. Those conditional use permits need to gain approval from the planning commission and all that. Those five criteria need to be met.
I understand. But I guess I'm thinking, if this isn't a permitted use under limited agriculture, I mean, it just strikes me as that this kind of use is a, should be an allowed use under limited ag. I understand that if it was zoned residential, it wouldn't be. But it's not. It's zoned limited agriculture.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I think that's what I'm trying to, I was attempting to clarify earlier. I think we have to be careful about when we use the term allowed. Allowed means you get to use your property for those stated purposes in that district. You don't have to seek permission. A conditional use requires that you come into this body and get permission. And that permission or denial of that use is based upon consideration of the five criteria specified in our ordinance. So even though it's limited ag, it does not mean you can purchase that property in limited ag and operate a sawmill. To do that, you're gonna have to come into this body, and this body will need to consider the five criteria in our ordinance to determine whether that's appropriate. So again, I think we need to be very careful when we use the term allowed use. And I think that's where things have gotten blurred over the years.
Does that answer your question Kathy?
Well, I'm still not 100% clear on it, but I'll let it go for right now.
Well, if I may, just to clarify a little bit, for instance, because it's a conditional use, and Mr. Shad has come in and he's applied for this conditional use, the board must, under state statute, consider the criteria set out in our ordinance. That includes is our adequate infrastructure such as roads. I know we've heard members of the community speak to certain issues with the road. It requires this body to decide whether this use is going to have a negative impact on growth, the natural growth in that area. It requires this body to determine whether that sawmill may have a negative impact on the use and enjoyment of existing property that's already been developed. It requires this board to decide whether approval of that sawmill may have negative impact on air quality and noise and that type of thing. So that's the difference. This board has to consider those, that criteria in approving or denying any conditional use.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Well, thank you for the clarification. I see the applicants in the audience today. My question, what I was getting to at the very beginning is, was under the understanding that the house that was on the property was gonna be redone, and they were actually living on it. And so that's where my questions were tailored towards what kind of sawmill this was gonna be and so forth. But I guess, you know, this property isn't new to this board, you know, with the mining. I know that it's been extended, but it has a dead-end date to where it's done, because the excavate was meant, and the mining permit was meant to be just for, to get it leveled out. It wasn't for commercial use, that type of thing. So I just wanted to clarify that. And this is new to this board. But the information that was just presented from the residents kind of puts doubts in my minds of the intended use of this property. Maybe the applicant can give me more details on that, but I was under the understanding from past meetings that the house was gonna be a residence and so forth with the shop building, but it looks like things are changing, and maybe he needs to address that. Is this gonna be your residence? That'd be the question for the applicant. Is it gonna be your residence? Or is it gonna be a property for your business and equipment?
Okay. We have two other speaker request forms, and then I thought we'd pull up the applicant to respond to the items and the questions that have been addressed. So we get the rest of the questions out, and then we'll go from there. Sunny, I know that I skipped over you on the last speaker. Did you have any questions before I move on?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker request form on this item is Mark Wiley.
Good morning, everyone. It's nice to be here.
Sir, go ahead and state your name for the record in the mic.
My name is Mark Wiley.
Thank you.
I live in, gosh, I don't have my, I'm the first property on the right coming in. So I'm directly affected by all the truck traffic in this area. So basically, I'd like to read something. This is the fifth meeting that we've attended concerning the use of this property. I, myself and the other landowners have repeatedly brought up our concerns with the dust spreading across the residential neighborhoods and beyond, as well as the heavy truck traffic on the road, not built to sustain such heavy loads. We have already incurred damage to the road, which will have to be repaired this spring. We're very apprehensive about going forward with this, because as soon as we get it down, there'll be additional heavy truck traffic on the road. So, and a road is built differently for residential traffic than it is for heavy truck use. So, and this has all occurred since November of last year. So we're looking at probably spending $5,000 to $6,000 in gravel this spring to bring it back up after the heavy loads we had on it last fall. And when that occurs, and I'm in the construction business too, when you have heavy loads like that going over that road, you pound that aggregate down in the top of the subgrade, and when water hits it, it brings the mud right up. So then you've got to combat that again with more rock. And I'm sure you guys understand this. So what I did is I kind of thought, well, we've hashed this out numerous times. We've talked about the impacts. Even people to the north of us, a mile away, are getting some of the dust residue from this situation. I mean, he come and pounded on Russ's door, demanding, you know, asking what the heck is going on here? Because he was getting dust clear over there, over there on his property, and he was upset about it. So what I did is I went into the comprehensive, the county's comprehensive plan and policies regarding future land use. And what I picked up was, you know, on 6.0, Chapter 6 of that plan, there are some policies that set forth to protect Penn State County's natural resources in areas of scenic beauty through proper land use practices. Number one, to ensure the quality, location, and type of commercial land uses are related to the needs and demands of the local population. Encourage the infilling of vacant residential land in order to promote existing infrastructure, to provide for stable neighborhoods by minimizing adverse effects from conflicting land uses. So directly related to that, both Russ and Bob would be substantially impacted by this approval of this conditional use permit. Their land values would go down. In fact, Russ and Kathy, I mean, they're inundated with dust. They are. They have a fountain right on the backside of their property tied to their home, and they just cleaned it out of all the dirt and all the dust. And it's just a mess. So, so I would, I would hope that through this process and through the five meetings that we've been to, that you've recognized that we are extremely concerned about what's going on up there. We have, this is a residential subdivision. We have kids riding bikes on the road. We have couples and single people walking their dogs and their animals in the afternoon and during the day. So I would hope that some reasonless weighs out here. So, and I thank you. That's all I have to say at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. If you hold tight, if anyone has any questions, go ahead Travis.
Chairman, when you said there was heavy loads that are going in there, what kind of vehicles were going through there and what do they carry? I mean, what was the heavy loads, just?
They were hauling gypsum to GCC. They were, I think there was probably 20 loads that were hauled out of there. They were, I think there was probably twenty loads that were hauled out of there, and they weren't just straight trucks, they were truck and pups. So I'm in the construction business, so uh, you know, those trucks will probably carry between anywhere between thirty-five and forty tonne each.
Um, did you do you document any road damage, just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry?
Did you document any road damage? Like, when those trucks were going through there, obviously, if that's dirt road and it's not built for that, have you documented with images or anything of of road damage?
Oh, yeah, I've taken a bunch of pictures. I didn't bring that with me today. I mean, we've had that at the at the other commission meetings. We we brought up the pictures and they had them there. I don't know if if you have them anymore or not, I don't think you do. But yeah, there was some damage.
Okay.
And if 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 this commission needs to get those pictures, I can get them to you, so.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Wiley from anyone here? Uh, do you have any questions for Mr. Wiley?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Sunny?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the next speaker request form that we have on this item is Mitch Ludlin? Is that correct, sir? You're going to pass? Okay. Um, I guess with that, uh, the the applicant did come uh, into the meeting chamber. Sir, would would you like to come up? We have some, I think there's some questions that have been raised.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one quick question before he comes up?
Go ahead.
And I just want to ask it to staff or just, it's a general question. Are all the neighbors that are on that street, Marvin Street, are they all here? Is there anyone who's not here? That, i- is there any neighbor on that street that's not here, or is every single?
All here. Gerald.
Gerald. Come on, make it work. Yeah.
Okay. I ju- I just wanted to get an idea of how many of y'all were here from that area.
Thanks, Travis. Go ahead, Mr. Shad.
Hi, um, I'm Cody Shad, and uh...
So I think some of the questions that were asked earlier was, uh, and Lloyd, maybe I'll paraphrase and correct me if I'm wrong, is this started out as you purchased the property, you wanted to put a shed on it, wanted to lower the location of the shed, that ended up being more material than than's required for normal residential construction, that it prompted a mining permit and construction permit. We, then that process went forward, some of that material, it sounds like, went to GCC, and it seems like the story keeps growing. Is that kind of the summary of your thoughts, Floyd, and where is it going from here?
Yeah, that that's correct, Rich. I mean, it's been, that's how the mine, but I think it, the, my intent from my understanding is that 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 was the, why the material was going to get removed, and we understood the mining permit. And I think that created a lot of, lot of problems for that area, that permit and all that work that needed to be done. I think you were sitting out here with some of the questions. I guess my thoughts were this was all to be done, the house was going to get rebuilt, and the shop was going to be there. And I guess my my thoughts was, your intent was to be living on the property and and the home use, and that's why I was asking the questions prior to the meeting of what kind of business it's going to be, because I believe prop- property owners should be able to do some things on their property. It shouldn't be commercial, but if it's for their personal use, which is building houses, they might be able to do, but it it's becoming apparent that it's getting to be more. And so that's where I was kind of going from that. Um, could you explain to me, Mr. Shad, what what your intent is? Because, you know, there was stated that you have you have residence somewhere else, and so is, what is your exact intent of this property? Is it to have a family member living there? It seems like I remember something like along those lines, what it's going to be? Because I think the residents, first of all, I think, I don't know where this is going to go today, but I think the first problem that needs to be dealt with was get, get the mining permit done, re- reclamation and everything done, get that dust control fixed before you move forward with anything else, and have those discussions with your residents. But that seems to be, to me, the first step before going totally into this. But uh, those are my thoughts. I kind of went in with questions and thoughts and so forth, but...
Yeah, so um, the reason that I'm going through with this, you know, we we started with the permits, we hauled for uh, one day and the, you know, the, there was a lot of issues with the neighbors, so we stopped. So we haven't actually even worked on that land since the last commission meeting here because um, you know, we've got it down to the rock and and I needed a blaster to blast the rock. The neighbors that are here that, or I don't know which one it was, told the blaster that they're going to sue them if if they try to blast on my land. So that put the blaster at a standstill. So I mean, so the reason I'm trying to get these permits is because the the work I've been trying to do has been, you know, it's been approved by the the county, but the neighbors um, have kind of got it stopped in its tracks by making up, you know, uh, making up things to M Shaw originally had it stopped, and then threatening to sue the blaster, now has it stopped. So so I wanted to have basically things in place be- so I'm not constantly dealing with um, with um, room full of complaining people. I mean, this this whole, this property, so the Wiley and everyone who owned this land before, you know, they sold a bunch of land, and now it's uh, it's um, you know, the mines that you see that Pete Lean have, you know, and I don't know what those are zoned, they must be heavy industrial, so they can, they can take some of their land and sell it in heavy industrial. But if I want to, you know, use my forty acres to uh, um, bring in cedar trees that I got on a different property and and cut them up and use them for structures, you know, I, it's a huge fight. Um, but I I mean, the the land that Pete Lean's mining, you know, a big group of the people in the the room, or the family of the people in the room that are doing all the complaining, they sold that land and did the heavy industrial and made it a mine. So they helped contribute to that little six acre development being surrounded on all sides by mines and heavy industrial and light industrial. But when somebody else wants to sell a little piece or wants to do whatever they want on it, I mean, it's a fight because they think that, I don't know, it's like, almost like they should own it themselves, I don't, I don't know, but but um, I guess the basis of my story there is they, they took a piece of their land and made it heavy industrial right next to them here. But then when I want to be able to store my my stuff or bring in logs and cut them up or anything like that on my land, it's it's a fight and I can't do it. Um, our our grading permit, we we've been stopped on that. I mean, I I think you guys have been pretty well aware of what's been going on and, but we, so we've been stopped. We haven't, we haven't done anything since for months, you know? So it's just sitting there, so that, so if they can keep fighting and and telling people that I get in there, that they're going to sue them and and totally stop my work, all of a sudden, this construction permit's over. And then they're going to be telling me that I got to move all my equipment off my land because I don't have a construction permit anymore. So so then it's going to be a bunch of more money to move, you know, the piece of equipment that I bought just for that land, you know, to be able to do the work for the cheapest amount possible that I could afford, you know? So I I I mean, the reason for me getting these permits now is not because of change in plans, it's because of, you know, the the, I mean, I might, I I got completely stopped on my project. So now I got to figure out a new way to to go. I mean, I, it's uh, but yeah, so and and then as far as the property, uh, the plan was still to have my my brother live in that house. Um, that house is pretty, pretty valuable, probably, I don't, I don't know the plan yet. I think I got another real nice house that that uh, I was thinking we were going to maybe move into the property and use that as a residence and and then just convert that house that's there now into into um, something else. And I I don't know, it's kind of up in here in in, so, I mean, it it will, I guess it will probably change, and the more, you know, I, every step I take, the more fighting I get is 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 definitely going to change it into um, certain avenues that'll make things go smoother. Um, but, I mean, for me to to get approval of being able to store my equipment there and and in that, the, I don't think we have like a full sawmill permit here. It's like, to be able to make, what, maybe fifty big timber trusses a year, which is, you know, a trust a week? Um, you know, and I, to get, to be able to store my my equipment there, I, I mean, I don't need a sawmill permit. Yeah, I I mean, it's just, I just kind of was sick of my stuff just getting shut down at, you know, after it's all been approved, just because the neighbors who turned a bunch of the land into heavy industrial um, all around them, you know, are fighting me when I try to to do anything with my land, anything at all. So I mean, I I guess I don't get how they can do whatever they want, turn into heavy industrial, but then when I try to do something, it's, it's a constant fight everywhere I turn.
Mr. Shad, I I I have a, it's still not clear to me what your plan is for the property. Is your intent to uh, build a shed on the property and and conduct a business out of that? Or is the, was the intent to build the shed on the property and have it be for residential use?
Um, you know, the, this, the more, right now, what what my plan is, is I would have a a structure there that my brother's going to live in. I will have um, some of my stuff stored there. Um, you know, I might, I was thinking maybe renting out uh, some garage space to one of my friends that owns a a concrete company, so maybe having some of his stuff stored there. Um, I, you know, I d- I don't know. I guess that I, my my plan of with the land is, you know, would be changing for quite some time to come, you know, because it's, it was just, the main reason I bought it was so I could store my stuff there. Um, and then my brother needed a place to live. So those are the two, the two main reasons for purchasing it. It's it's land that's sur- is surrounded by mines and and got quite an interstate frontage. And so, I mean, basically, it's a trailer park to the northwest, a mine to the north, you know, a mine to the northwest, a mine to the south, a mine to the west, um, with the, you know, and it's, it's all industrial to the east. So I mean, it, that land, you know, I don't know, wait.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Travis.
I got a couple of questions. Um, so if I understood you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I understood what you said, the main two reasons why you bought it was to store your stuff there and to do your work.
To to store store some stuff there, um, it'd be a place for my brother to live, and I I guess I didn't...
Oh, I, okay, so for your brother to live, and your brother's not living there?
No, the the house needs to be redone first.
When when did you buy the property?
Um, I I suppose maybe like November.
Whenever you, okay. Are you, what, do you know that you have covenants on that property through an HOA?
What's that?
Do you know that you have covenants on that property through an HOA?
Um, those, but those covenants can be changed by like three signatures?
They they can. I I was just asking if you knew that when you purchased the property.
Yeah, and I know, I knew that, and I know that the amount of land that I control has the ability to change the covenants and take away the covenants, and the covenants do expire. So...
I I was just asking if you were aware.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that's all my questions.
Jim, do you?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, um, Mr. Shad, I have a question regarding the road, Marvin Road. What is your perspective on uh, maintenance of the road and the condition of the road and the ability to with, of the road to withstand the trucks and the equipment that you foresee?
Well, uh, before I even started on this this project, I I asked um, uh, one of the Wiley's here about uh, redoing that road because it doesn't have any ditches on it. And I was told that I couldn't touch the road. I asked about paving the road, was told that I couldn't touch the road, but in my opinion, um, the road needs to be built into a a real road and and then it would be fine. It needs some culverts added in some low areas and and uh, yeah, it's, I mean, right now, it's a a gravel road that doesn't have ditches, but I think with 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 ditches, it will be just, it'll be a fine road.
Who would, who would pay for upgrading the road?
Um, I would not mind paying for it and building it. I mean, that's, that's what I do for a living is is build roads. So I, I mean, I would have no no issues with uh, with upgrading the road if if I was allowed to um, do what I wanted to on my land. I would have no issues with bringing that road into a a county uh, spec.
Any further questions, Kathy?
No.
Thank you. Sunny? Any questions, Sunny?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Travis.
Mr. Chairman, just out of curiosity, why haven't you proposed to bring the road up to spec if that's um, something that you're willing to do?
Well, it's just another fight that I didn't want to have yet, but uh, um, I figured we'd, yeah, I mean, I'm 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 complete, it's a, it's a cost that I don't want to do and get absolutely nothing out of my land, because I mean, right now, the, I've started on this land and everything's been shut down.
But if you would have proposed it and made a contract, then then that kind of opened you up to that, if if they would have all agreed to that. And I I guess that's where I'm kind of, if you would be willing to ask them, you know, it doesn't look like you've even asked them or even, I could be totally wrong, but that it just doesn't seem like that is something that has been proposed.
Okay, well, before I closed on this land, um, before I closed on this land, everything I was planning on doing was approved, and then and then I also asked Mark Wiley about us paving that road or fixing the road, and he said the road's fine, and no, we couldn't do anything with the road. So that was told to me before I purchased it. Um, but yeah, I'm I'm more than willing to uh, to make that a county spec road, that's not an issue.
Tom, I have. Okay.
One question.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Ted, my next question is, where are we at, where are you at with uh, the mining permit getting that completed? And you say it's been held up, and I know it's been extended. As I stated before, I think that seems to be the number one problem right now. If we could get through this and get, get your land, get that dust down, do what needs to be done, get it done, I think that that's number one. So where are you with that? Are you going to be able to complete that, or are you just going to end up walking away?
Oh, no, I'll 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 get it completed, but it it'll change my plans a little bit of what um, what I was planning on doing. I just ordered a rock saw, I think we can get it out with a a rock saw now. Um, so the goal is to get that out here and um, but yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been completely stopped due to no fault of my own. It's been complete, um, a hundred percent neighbors complaining is what, why I haven't been able to get anything done. So I mean, this project would have been done already if, if, you know, I wasn't, if every subcontractor I had in there wasn't threatened with being sued and and um, I don't know.
Well, that's, that's all I was trying to figure out, because I mean, they've got some concerns with the dust and stuff, which is legitimate concerns, and I, and and so that's what we're hearing, and that's what seems to be your number one problem, is to try and work a way to get that through before I think I would, myself, would even consider anything else.
Okay.
And so that, that's just my own personal point.
Further questions for Mr. Shad?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, I have one other just observation and question. Uh, it it seems my understanding is Mr. Shad believes that because these four, five, six landowners over the last thirty years have bought property and built homes there, and the general area has expanded or deteriorated, depending on how you see it, into heavy industrial and increased mining, which I see we have a couple of other uh, uh, mining permits on our agenda today, that these people who are presently living there should more or less agree to the continued deterioration of their neighboring properties. Is that the way I understand it? Because you made the observation that there's just mining and industrial around, and these people ought to be comfortable with this status quo. Is that the way I see, am I interpreting you correct? you correctly? Because I do believe I'm I'm stating fairly accurately what you said.
No, what I'm saying is the these people are the ones who sold to the mines and created the mining on their land. Well.
Folks, we hey, well, oh, we don't, we're not gonna do that here. We can, you can come back up after Mr. Shad's done speaking, and we'll take care of it then.
If we look at, if we look at um histories on like the heavy industrial on Pete Lean where that big pond is, I th- I'm I'm thinking that's uh Wiley Property, who is this subd- subdivision. So, and they turned it into heavy industrial, and and that's what's created mining. So, I'm not saying that they should, I'm saying that they created this, and it was okay for them to sell and have a heavy industrial mine and sell their land and make a profit off of it, but somebody else comes in and has forty acres. They can't do anything with their land because they don't approve of it, but but the uh the group that owned the land that the houses are on now can sell it and turn it into heavy industrial, and that's what happened in the past. Portions of of that land were sold and turned into heavy industrial for mining. And and the benefits were were the family that pretty much is the majority of the family that owns houses in this area.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
I need to make the observation that that's sort of an irrelevancy. It might be sort of a moral quandary for some people, but legally and uh in terms of a policy, uh, these people have a right to do with their land as they choose. If they choose to sell it to an industrial group and let that and profit from it and put up with the dust and discomfort perhaps of in- industry industrial activity and mining, they have a right to do that. But they've now established the notion clearly with the HOA, et cetera, and the zoning that Rapid City has established, uh, that this is not to be an industrial area. And if there's any integrity in this land usage, uh, uh, this whole notion of land usage and planning, I think we have to start drawing some lines here and there. And if, quite frankly, uh, I'm inclined to believe that that the usage of Mr. Shad is about to make of this or hopes to make of this is inappropriate, and he ought to go somewhere else, sell the property for its use, its intended use, which is uh residential, and find something elsewhere. Um, he took a certain risk, I think, when he bought this, knowing that this was essentially a residential area. So, I I'm frustrated by um how he has called into question the history of this area and accused these people of of acting with, you know, you know, ill intent and and so forth. So, anyway, I I I I I think that this is um a situation where planning needs to be, our plans need to be followed.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Shad? Sir, thank you very much for your time. Uh, I know that there was some hands in the audience, and so we'll, I wanna do this in a controlled fashion. Go ahead and come up. Uh, Jessica.
Jessica Smith, the land that he is referring to would be.
They can't hear you.
Pull, yeah, pull, just pull it down.
Okay, sorry for keep. Um, the land that he's referring to is actually Knitschney's land. And you know where the old Milk Run Road is, uh, by Harley Davidson? So, okay. So, that was Knitschney's land. Knitschney is the one who sold that land off, not us. Then you go over to Ole's land. This is how long our family's been in this area. Ole's land got sold off to Pete Lean's after Ole died, and that goes up over this hill. Then you have Pete Lean's here. They've been there forever. We've always gotten along with them. We've always talked to them, too. Then you have a trailer court, which is residential. There's nothing wrong with trailers. They're being infected by the mining over here. Then you have my grandma's sister's land. Couldn't afford to buy it. Pete Lean's bought it, and they're keeping it into their name. So, no, we have never sold heavy industrial or industrial or light industrial. That has never happened. So, before people state facts, they should do some research. So, those are the land pieces. Knitschney runs, he still has a farm over there. His family still, I think, owns it. Ole didn't, but Vicky bought it, Vicky Palmer. But that is what is surrounding. Nothing else. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Smith?
I ha- I have one question.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, and I don't know if this is for you or one of the other homeowners, but um heard a little different story on the road situation from uh Mr. Shad than we did from the homeowners uh about the, you know, the opportunity to upgrade at no cost to the homeowners. I mean, what's the homeowner's perspective on that proposal?
If you bring in a road, culvert system, cement, the grade of the road has to be taken down. So, when you go over this hill, you can't even see if somebody's coming over it. I think that there were two county commissioners that came out and actually drove the road. Um, but right now, it's just mud right now, cuz we don't wanna put any more gravel on. What's the point? Um, now, the gas lines that run through there might be affected if you take the road down to the grade that it needs to be. Mark would be one that you could actually talk to about the road conditions. He would know better, but the gas lines are not that far below the road surface. I mean, if you took the whole grade down and you did that, you are compromising the two major gas lines that run into Rapid City that are going to be affected. These are put in in the thirties. So, how stable are they? So, do you think we're going to allow dynamite to go on even up there? Come home and our house is gone? Oops, sorry. But I would suggest you talk to Mark about the road condition. He would be able to describe that more for you, to your satisfaction, I think.
Any further questions for Mrs. Smith? Okay. Mr. Wiley, if you would come back up, please.
Well, let me see here if I can outline this. So, you guys have a better idea what's happened in the past. All of this land right in here within that cursor was owned by my grandparents. And when they passed away, uh, we resided up there. My mother resided up there, and she ran horses on that property for years. And then, of course, the sisters, her sisters wanted to sell the property, so they sold this piece here and this piece here to Pete Lean and Sons. We we weren't in a position to make any comment about it. They wanted to sell it, and they sold it. And right now, Lean's uses this land as a buffer between what they have here and, you know, they can't do anything here. So, basically, they're good neighbors, and we put up with the dust, cuz they were there long before we were. So, we kinda put up with them, and they kinda put up with us, and we get along. So, the road itself is was built many, many years ago. It was up to standards at that point in time, and I know uh the city at that time. If any other, if if some of the lots were broken down into smaller units, the hill that Jessica was referring to right here would have to be taken down, so you wouldn't have the incline on the road itself. Uh, the gas lines lay on top of the jip. They were put in nineteen thirty-eight, and they're catharticized, and they run right right through this path right here, along the road and through the property. And I have some of the gas line on mine. Uh, Tom does, and so does Bob. And it's not a concern. They've they do flyovers and check on them. But I know we did have down at the bottom of the road, we had our mailboxes on the sharp corner on Deadwood Avenue, and it got to be too dangerous, so we moved them up just at where the the section lines meet right here. When I did that, uh, Montana Basin was down inspecting what we were doing because we were within a num- certain number of feet of those gas lines. So, they're, excuse me, they're very concerned about those lines. And I know where the road crosses those gas lines, it is about eighteen inches above the gas lines because they're laying right on jip. So, and they can't get any deeper, or at that time, they did, they choose not to. So, and the road is substandard. It has taken a lot of beating over the years, and we have to bring it up to s- to spec, our our personal spec, not county specs. And also, Mr. Cody Shad said that he offered to pave it. He did not offer to pave it. And also, I asked him about, you know, he did create some damage down at the bottom of the road with the trucks, and I asked if he could put a couple loads of rock on the road, and he never did that as well. And I'm sure he had good intentions, but it it never came to fruition. So, and we take care of the road. Everybody shares a responsibility in that. And, you know, you get to the point where it's pretty quote-quote, you know, what I'm talking about. If he comes in and does a bunch of stuff, then he expects to put something down here, which is not conducive to the residential neighborhood. So, we've kinda stayed stayed away from that. We don't wanna owe anybody, and we don't wanna be owing anything to anybody. So, we wanna keep separate. So, are there any questions concerning the road or anything else?
I I just have one question.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Oh, I am of the assumption then that there are recorded easements for the gas line?
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, okay. And that was all. Thank you.
Okay.
Sandy, if you look on page three of six of this item in the in the in the packet, there's some diagonal lines that run through the planted area.
Yeah, there should be, there's a hundred-foot easement on that, isn't there?
Yep.
Yeah.
I was on five of six. Thank you.
So, uh, Jim, any questions for Mr. Wiley?
Uh, no.
Kathy?
No.
Sunny?
No.
Okay. Sir, thank you for your for your uh comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did I miss anybody in the audience that would wishes to speak on this issue? Please again state your name for the record, sir, when you come up and speak into the mic.
I'm Russ Brown. Uh, I am the individual that talked to the blasting guy, and to set the record straight, there was never anything said about suing him. He did not even know there was the gas line up there. Uh, when I explained that to him, his eyes kinda got pretty big. And I told him that he was gonna have a problem with the county trying to blast up there with a gas line. But there was never anything said about any lawsuits or any suing. So, that is totally fictitious. And as far as him being stopped, we've had dump trucks full of dirt going down for the last three weeks, several days a week. There's dump trucks going down that road with dirt in them. So, he's not being on the level at all.
Sir, thank you for your comments. Is there any questions for? Okay. Um, recommendation uh from staff is denial of conditional use permit twenty dash zero eight, uh specifically is for the items listed uh concerning conditional use permits, and those are items um under section four would be A, B, C, D, and E. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Seeing none, um, further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, just one question of clarification. I just wanna make sure from staff, he talks about having his equipment on there. Right now, he's doing this removal. Uh, what do you consider acceptable for equipment on the forty-acre property? Because I'm sure we're gonna get concerns. I mean, I mean, in city standards, if the side road is gravelled, you can have, you can park a vehicle or motorhome there. What if, what kind of uh apartments do we have so that not only he knows, but the residents know?
Are are, I guess I would ask the question, are you referring to if he doesn't have a mining and construction permit, if it's just?
Afterwards, yeah.
Afterwards, um, oh, that'd be more of a Britney question.
I'm just curious, cuz, you know, everybody's in intentions is a little bit different of what.
In the past, um, we have looked at um if they just store their own personal property, like inside buildings and things, and not actually running the business out of that property. Um, so if it's stored for personal use, um, you know, in um agricultural properties, it's not unusual for people to have heavier equipment because they use it to, you know, manage their property. Um, so that's kind of the litmus test, so to speak, that we use. Um, if the the equipment is there solely to run a business out of is different than if it's being stored there uh for their personal use for their personal property, to be used on that property.
I I got a question. I'm not sure, Cody, if it, um, he said that in some instances, uh, or Mr. Shad said in some instances that he that he shut down, but I wanna make sure that he is able to take care of his requirements under his construction permits and his mining permits and get those complete um art. So, can you speak to those comments?
Yeah, so he's not actually shut down from county standpoint. He's shut down because of um neighbor complaints, and he can't, from conversations from the neighbor complaints and everything. Um, from county perspective, um, he did ask if he could blast it under five oh seven, be under the mining permit. He can. He was just given the instructions to notify neighbors, get approval from the gas company, since the gas utility line is there, and then follow all federal, state, and local regulations for it. Um, this is um last week or the week before was the first time I heard about any notification of neighbors for the blasting.
Okay.
Um, but he, from the stony county standpoint, can still operate.
Okay.
To the extent of five oh seven B and five oh seven A.
Okay. Um. And do do you know the dates on when those are, those permits are are due?
It was six months from the first meeting in March, so I think it'll probably come up in like July or August.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, I um, I don't, I don't like it when we get such conflicting um reports and and um representation of facts from the different parties. And and so, I was wondering if the commission here would be willing to continue this for two weeks so that that those of us, and myself is one of them, would like to go out and actually look at this and get a little better sense of, you know, what the story is. I I would appreciate that, uh, having a little time to to um to allow a visit if if you'd choose. And so, that, cuz I'm not, I, it's not comfortable for me when the when the uh reports are so conflicting from the the applicant and the neighbors. So, if I, if that would, it all be a consideration, I could, I would support continuing for a couple of weeks.
Okay. Um, I I'm not opposed to uh that idea. Um, I too had had questions. If I if I have to vote on it today, it's it's still not clear to me. Um, I I don't, if I understood Mr. Shad's comments correctly, um, it sounds to me like he's planning on adapting the use based on what he can do there, um, or maybe what will be acceptable as opposed to getting a submitted plan to this board for us to review and approve, uh, taking into consideration what we do. So, um, uh, my my, that is, that's my general concern, um, is is not really a hundred percent on what we would be approving or denying. Um, so I would be supportive of your continuation.
Mr. Chairman, then, do all of these people need to show back up again to state their same cases in two weeks?
That that would be up to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office, in response to Commissioner Runde's question. No, this would just be, this is the hearing. You've held the public hearing. You would just be continuing the hearing um for further investigation and consideration in two weeks. But the individuals here would not have to appear. You can consider their statements today and making your decision.
Thank you very much.
So, everything that is said.
So everything that is said here today, and in the past for, or on this item, here today could be used to make the decision two weeks from now as well?
Yes, you're simply continuing this hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jim.
I think it would be wise if these people, uh, wanted to promote their self-interest here, that they be here in two weeks, irrespective of, you know, the fact that we have a record of their concern.
Noted, thank you. With that, the recommendation from staff is denial of conditional use permit twenty dash zero eight. Um, Kathy, you had indicated that, uh, you would think that, um, a continuation would be in order. Um, is there a motion on this item?
I, I would move to, uh, continue this item to, what's the?
May twenty sixth, it's on a Tuesday.
The May twenty sixth. Say again?
Because we're closed on Memorial Day that Monday.
The May twenty sixth meeting. Planning a zoning meeting.
Motion is there second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to continue, uh, this item, um, conditional use permit twenty dash zero eight to the, uh, May twenty sixth meeting, further discussion.
I have some discussion.
Go ahead, Sandy.
And, and that is this, um, the current zoning does not allow this use. It has to be under conditional use. And, and therefore, the five items that have been mentioned would, would need to apply. And so therefore, I, you know, I don't see a need to carry this on two more weeks. I, I would, you know, I, I would have to go along with the recommendation of the staff to deny it. Thank you.
Is that, is that a substitute motion? Or are you just commenting?
I'm, I'm just making a comment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sunny.
I'd like to make the substitute motion to deny per the, um, per staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, uh, further discussion on the substitute motion to, uh, deny conditional use permit twenty dash zero eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
You know, I was ready to vote, but it, after listening to Kathy's explanation, and, and I think I owe it to both residents and to the applicant to make a site visit. Not only to see how the mining, uh, operations go on, how, when that permit can be done. But I think, uh, after the testimony I've heard today, I think that's a good idea. For my, me personally, I know a couple other commissioners went and did a site visit and, and had some different conclusions. So, um, I'm not going to support the motion on the floor for right now, because I, I, I think I owe it to them both to do a site visit.
Further comment?
I, I'm sorry, I did not hear the end of, of what you just said.
I think I owe it to the residents to do a site visit, the applicant and the residents.
To postpone it for two weeks, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Travis.
I, during this discussion, I, I was of the opinion also to deny because of some of the issues out there. However, I do think it's, uh, it is appropriate for us to want to go out there and actually take a site visit to look and see, um, what's going on out there. I would also encourage, um, and, and whether, whichever way passes, whether we pass the denial, or whether we pass the, the continuation. Uh, if it does get continued, at least, um, if I come out there to look and things, there's questions that I asked here today, because I'm looking from, for, uh, some very solid evidence. That's the kind of information that I'm looking for you guys when I come out there and look at a site visit. So just keep that in mind, that all of us to be convinced, you're going to want to show us the hard evidence, not the, you know, I, I don't want to call them assumptions, because you guys live there, so y'all see this. But, uh, what we would consider assumptions, because we don't have anything documenting or showing the solid evidence of what it's, that you're complaining, so I just want to put that out there. Um, so I think my perspective is, I do think we owe them at least a, a physical site visit, in my view. So that's why I would still, uh, want the continuation, rather than the straight-up denial at this point.
Michelle, I have a procedural question. If, um, if this moves forward, and then the denial of the conditional use permit fails, where does that leave this item?
Goes back to the original motion, uh, on the floor.
The substitute motion?
Yes.
Would fail?
Yeah, the, they have the subs, the substitute motion would fail, and it'd go back to the original motion. I understand the confusion, because the concern would, but, but look at it this way. Even though the motion to deny has failed, you actually haven't approved the conditional use yet. So, motion to deny would fail, you go back to the original motion to continue.
Thank you for clarifying what I had in my mind. Um, does all, does all that make sense to everyone? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Any fur, any further comments?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, this, this continuation and site visit, I assume that this is not an organized site visit, but rather that we individually arrive on the scene and investigate on our own? Can you clarify that?
If you would like, it is not an organized site visit, and, and frankly, we, there can't be more than, I think, one or two of us in the same spot at the same time reviewing the same thing. So, uh, that, we, we then get into quorum issues and those types of items. So, uh, it is not a scheduled item.
Okay, let me make one other comment. Uh, I certainly am in favor of denial of this application, but I'm certainly, uh, willing to vote for a continuance, so that the denial, when it comes, will be a little bit easier to swallow, I guess. So, I would support a continuation.
Any further, anything further? Okay, with all, all that being said, the substitute motion is for denial of conditional use permit, uh, twenty dash zero eight. Roll call vote.
Rich?
Uh, no.
Jim?
No.
Lloyd?
No.
Kathy? Kathy?
You're muted.
No.
Travis?
No.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Um, motion fails. We are back to the original motion, which was to continue this item for, uh, to the May twenty sixth meeting. Further discussion on that item before we vote? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
And Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, this item is continued to the May twenty sixth meeting. For everyone that showed up today, we really appreciate, uh, the, the time and the testimony that was given, thank you. Thank you, uh, next item on the agenda is, is item eight. Go ahead, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sacramour, Middle Planner. Uh, item eight is mining permit MP twenty dash zero four. It's to operate, uh, mining operation to extract limestone by drilling and blasting to be hauled offsite. Um, in accordance with sections two twelve and five oh seven B. The applicant and landowner is GCC Dakota. Uh, the size of the property is currently a hundred and forty point three two acres. Um, it's zoned heavy industrial, there is no flood hazard area on the property, the access is taken off Sturgis Road. Um, there is currently already a operation on the, on the property. Um, the, um, mining records go back to the mid nineteen twenties. Um, almost two million tons have been mined from the site. Uh, this was routed around for comment. Um, highway didn't have any comments, um, since drainage was addressed and access was addressed. Um, the environmental planner came back, the applicants have submitted a reclamation, um, plan. Uh, and the city came back and, because it is in the city's three mile plating jurisdiction, as you can see the yellow line on the, um, screen, it borders Rapid, the city Rapid City. Um, the, their future land use is, uh, um, identifies the appropriate use for the property as mining and extraction. Um, the applicants are looking at, um, this is under, it was applied. Um, so our new section, mining section three twenty is in effect, however, this was applied for before that and went into effect. So this is under five oh seven B. Um, they're looking at approximately one point, um, seven million tons of, uh, material as anticipated to be excavated every year. Um, they have, uh, existing haul roads, um, and there is a current south-to-go to mine license zero one dash seven two one. Staff has no concerns with the proposed limestone quarry. Um, staff is recommending approval with nine conditions.
Thank you, is there, uh, questions for staff on this item?
Uh, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, are these mine permits branded in perpetuity? I mean, do they have a lifespan?
Um, from, from the state or, or the county, uh, no, I don't believe so.
Um, in the past, I would say yes, they are in perpetuity, most of the mining permits, um, go until, um, they no longer need them. Uh, most of them that have been applied for, um, I'm not aware of one that's actually ended. Does that answer your question?
Oh, second question. So, this mining permit is for a hundred and forty acres of surface acreage that is going to be mined? Is that correct? So that it requires a mining permit? Because you said there's already an existing mining operation, which has done much mining. So is this new surface area that's going to be disturbed and mined, then?
There is a small portion of it to the north that has been mined, the entire property has not been mined.
But the mining permit is for a hundred and forty surface acres?
Correct.
And constitutes the mining permit, okay.
Correct.
I, I'm always, this is merely an observation, but, uh, I'm always struck by the fact that we have all these mining operations so close to Rapid City. It, it seems like seldom do you see them, I know Pete Bean had one up, uh, Nemo Road, I don't know if it's still operating, but. Uh, it seems odd that we do this heavy mining within such, um, short distance of Rapid City. Now I understand that it's probably done because obviously materials can be moved cheaply and quickly, and that's, uh, uh, of concern, and I appreciate that. But I sometimes wonder if we're not creating this endless sort of, uh, dust, uh, condition in, in the city that ought to be thinking maybe about taking some of this activity and moving it farther away, so that populated areas are not so easily affected. So I, that's just an observation, uh, and I'm sure there's no particular answer at the moment. Anyway, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Shad, go ahead, Sunny.
I have two questions on this item. Um, the first one is about an attachment, uh, here in the packet. Uh, it looks like a cover letter from GCC. And in it, they state that it is their position that these operations are exempted from permitting a registration. I just don't understand that, and I hope to get an explanation of what that means.
So there's, uh, two people that can maybe speak to that item. Uh, one is, uh, Mr. Jim Anderson, and I believe that he's on the line, uh, on this call. And I believe the client's attorney is here as well, uh, that can probably answer that question. Um, before we get them up here, though, why don't we go ahead and make sure that, if there's any other, uh, questions for Cody?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question, so.
Go ahead.
The, um, so the fact that there's already an operation going on here, do they need this permit just because they're expanding it? Is that really the reasoning behind this?
So, so from my understanding, is this, this mine goes back, um, decades? And, and basically what it is, is with the new three twenty, there's the registration. Um, and with that registration, it comes with certain, um, there's certain criteria that you have to meet and everything. These guys applied for the permit, so instead of being under three twenty, they're under five oh seven B. So instead of applying for the mining registration, um, for an existing already operation, they, um, brought it into compliance, even though it wasn't really out of compliance, with five oh seven B. Um, just to get a, to get a permit coverage under five oh seven B.
Did that make, did that answer your question, Kathy?
So, in a way, it's a strategy so that, um, they have to get a permit under three twenty at some point in time. Is that right?
Michelle's coming up, hold on.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Uh, GCC had this application pending prior to the moratorium. And, uh, then we know the end result of that litigation. So, this application had been previously pending, and they chose, rather than to register as a legal non-conforming, they would simply complete the application process, which is entirely proper.
That makes sense, thank you.
And that's also why it's being considered under the old ordinance, because this was a pending application?
Okay, further questions? All right, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I think Cody can answer my second question on this. I, I see the attached reclamation plan, and also condition number three, that, that says that the, uh, applicants follow the reclamation plan. But, uh, is there any reason that there's no date or timeline for how this works? And can you explain what that timeline, or what the requirement would be for reclamation being done?
Um, so with, with the mine, it, it would just depend on when they were done, um, mining the material out of there. In, in the, um, uh, sorry, I gotta find the condition. So in, in condition two, where it says the applicants follow the Pennington County Stormwater Manual and Stormwater Management Plan, in that, in those plans and that manual, it outlines how long after work is done, you need to start reclamation. Um, so there is a timeframe when they're done during, doing the work. Uh, but you know, if they're not done mining out of there for fifty, sixty years, who, who knows how long it'll, the mining operation will last. So, um, there's a timeframe after they're done with, with the work. That answers your question.
That answers my question, but I, I'm surprised, um, because what I saw is that this may go on for, you know, many years. And I just wondered, does that mean that they don't do any, any reclamation until the very end? But, um, according to what you said, I don't think that's very clear.
Sunny, it's Brittany Molitor. Um, under the state's mine license and under their annual reports, they do have to reclaim certain amount of areas for areas that are disturbed. Um, so typically in their operations, um, their operations plan, they may disturb five acres and reclaim one or two every year as they move around the site. And that's pretty typical.
Okay, so basically, that's in the stormwater manual?
No, that is actually part of their mine license and their mining license requirements through the state. Um, so under our ordinance, or under our, um, conditions in our, um, permit, it'll say that they do have to follow the requirements of the state. The state does require them to get an industrial stormwater permit, uh, and they do have a, um, construction permit, or stormwater requirements under us. So it's covered in several different kind of avenues, depending upon how their operation and how they move around the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess to answer any other questions for Cody. All right, um, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, if the attorney or Mr. Anderson- All right, um, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, i- if the attorney or Mr. Anderson would like to answer the question regarding the, the letter in the, I'll let, I'll leave that up to you guys.
Good morning, this is, I'm Jason Smiley. Uh, I'm an attorney here in Rapid City. I represent GCC, uh, otherwise known as the Cement Plant. It really more of a legal question, so I'll take this one. Uh, you know, really the issue, uh, i- is one that has been, um, you know, disagreement between, uh, you know, our legal position and the state's attorney's, uh, legal position uh, with respect to whether or not a, a permit is needed at all. You know, the issue kind of came to light in the context of, you know, the lawsuit that the county had and then the effort at redrafting, uh, you know, the existing ordinances and, and throughout that whole, you know, two-year process, we started looking at, you know, the whole issue and, and really paying attention to what was going on. So, uh, really the, the, the permit request is simply, uh, GCC's good faith effort to try to be good neighbors. Uh, you know, our legal position hasn't changed that we don't feel that it's required ultimately. Uh, but w- we've tried to be responsible, uh, you know, corporate citizens and in, in doing that, uh, elected to uh, move forward and request a permit, uh, from the county. Uh, because what we don't want to have happen is, uh, you know, five years from now, when everybody on this board is different, e- everybody on this, this, uh, planning commission is different, when all the county commissioners has changed, it occurs to somebody that, hey, you know, that they think there's supposed to be a permit and now all of a sudden we have a legal dispute that could be avoided if we simply go through the process and, you know, that, so we're trying to be proactive and, uh, bring it forward to, uh, this body to make that request. Uh, you know, GCC, this cement plant in particular, uh, has been, uh, you know, taking over a business that was originally the, the state of South Dakota. They purchased this property from the state of South Dakota. The mine that they're on presently was mined by the state of South Dakota. And so really what they've done is they took over, uh, where, where the state left off and they've done all of that in accordance with state licensing requirements and all of the regulatory bodies that, uh, oversee them for these many, many years. And this is just sort of an oversight that came to light and so they're, they're, they're trying to, uh, you know, put their best foot forward, uh, for Pennington County. Uh, and that's, that's the purpose for the, the pending application.
Thank you. Sunny, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions on this item? Not seeing any. Um, I have been thinking about your question though, Jim, and my, my answer to your comment about, uh, location of these things, um, uh, it does have to do with the material being there and, and the second part of that would be maybe, uh, the areas have grown up around the, the, the mines. I know that when I was in college, I, I worked for the National Guard and, and at that time, the, um, the, uh, gun range that the National Guard has had, uh, behind the Stevens area was, uh, there for, I don't know, sixties since fifties, since the sixties, something like that anyway, but at that time it was a, it was a big deal. Uh, and we were up looking at various locations and, and those types of things. And I think ultimately that, uh, I don't know where that ended up, but it was one of these things where the houses, you know, grew up around the, around the gun range itself. So I'm not trying to bring up any contentious issues, just some perspective from, uh, previous jobs I've had, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd move for approval.
Take it.
Motion and second for approval of mining permit MP twenty dash zero four. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item nine.
Item nine is mining permit twenty dash zero five. Um, it's operated mining operation to extract, crush and stockpile shale to be hauled off site in accordance with section two oh five and five oh seven B. Uh, the applicant is GCC Dakota and the landowner is Larry Henderson. Um, the property sits at, there's four properties and totaling one hundred and sixty-seven point three nine acres. Um, they're all zoned general agriculture district. There is a mining operation in the north that's in Meade County. The access is taken off of Haynes Avenue. There's no special flood hazard on the area and according to DNR mining records, the mine has been in operation since nineteen seventies. Um, and about a hundred and eighty-six thousand tons have been mined from the site. Uh, this was a request for, um, this was sent for a request for comment. Um, the city came back and identified the, the uses appropriate for forest conservation and rural residential. It, according to the city, it is not in compliance with their city's comprehensive plan. Uh, the applicants have applied for the mining permit under section five oh seven B. This is the same situation as the last item, um, where they had a application pending before the moratorium. Um, they're, they're approximating two hundred and twenty thousand tons of material to be excavated per year. Um, the operation does include crushing and stockpiling shale. Um, the mine license is also, um, one dash zero, or one dash seven two one, uh, it was issued in nineteen seventy-seven. Um, one thing to note is that there is a section line, um, on the property that some of the disturbance goes through. Um, so the applicant would need to go in front of the Board of Commissioners to either vacate or close the section line that runs through the, through the operation. There's actually two, there's one that runs north, south, east, west. Um, that is a condition. It's condition number three. There are no document, uh, that has been in operation. There is no documented complaints from the site and staff's recommending approval with ten conditions.
Thank you. Other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none here. Jim, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, so the, this area is off of Haynes Avenue. Is that, am I reading that right?
Correct. It's on Haynes Avenue, right by the Meade-Pennington County line.
Okay.
I'll believe subdivision.
And there's a, there's a subdivision, uh, oh yes, okay. So I, I think I, oh yeah, I see where it is. Okay. Um, so that is an area in which there has been significant residential growth. And now it's going to become right next door to the housing, a rather large housing attract, uh, a mine, huh?
Um, it's, it's already been in operation since, I have to look again, the nineteen seventies, um, so it has already been mined.
But it's almost inconsequential in terms of activity, it looks like. Uh, I, I mean, I've seen this quote unquote mine. Is this, i- is the activity going to be much more dramatic? Are they going to take out more material every year? Or is it simply going to be, uh, a, a slow extension of, of their current activities?
Uh, I guess that would be probably a question for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
He's on the phone.
Mr. Anderson, are you, are you on the phone?
Yes, sir. I had a little trouble hearing the question.
Um, so I believe the question is, um, is the intent to increase the level of mining at the location? Or will the, a level of mining remain the same that it has been? Is that, d- do I accurately have your question, Jim?
Yeah, basically, yeah. Thank you.
Um, the level will not increase over what it's done for the last year and a half as far as tons per month removed. Just because of our upgrade project that we went through in two thousand eighteen, the vol- total volume per year, that may increase slightly to what we have in our application there. But the volume per month will remain the same as it has for the last two years.
Does that answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, I, I guess so.
And just to clarify, the, the Pennington County portion of that site, really at this time, we, we don't have pla- plans to do any excavation there. We've already, we, maybe a little bit for reclamation, but we've already mined a lot of that area. We keep it as a buffer, of course, from that housing development. The actual, actual excavation is occurring in Meade County. There's a haul road that goes through the property we're speaking of right now as far as the application goes.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, and so, but we cannot expect the dust from the operation to honor the buffer zone, right?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
I say, we, we cannot expect the dust to honor the buffer zone for that housing development to the south. I, I say that somewhat facetiously, but it's also a reflection of the reality, I think. I appreciate the buffer zone, but, um, I think the people in that housing area and beyond are going to have to brace themselves for continued difficulty. Anyway, that, that's all I have.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I do want to point out that although this is an application under five oh seven, as it was pending, it's still considered legal non-conforming use. And they, they simply don't have to register like other legal non-conforming because they'll have an existing permit. However, they will still need to meet the requirements of operation under three twenty. I don't know if everyone here recalls, but there's a very detailed list of requirements in terms of testing, dust control, those kind of things. Even though this is approved under five oh seven, existing operations including GCC will need to comply with those conditions of operation under three twenty.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Travis, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jim, are you still on the line? Is it Jim?
Uh, Jim Anderson, yes.
So if I understood you correctly, the, the mining operations happening up in Meade County is just traveling down that dirt road, uh, in Pennington County to get off of the property. Is that correct?
Correct. Uh, we might, you know, take some, do some sampling down there in Pennington County. There's, there's, at this time, no plans to do any more excavation inside Pennington County, but I can't say that not at all, you know, part, we, we may do a little here and there and there's a little bit of reclamation left to do down there as well.
And, and just for the record, I actually am in that area once a week, uh, on a pretty regular basis and I haven't noticed anything major in that area. That's, I'm, I'm very familiar with that mine is, because I know the property right across the street from it. So I was just confirming that that's what I was thinking it was. All right, thank you.
Any further questions on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I have only one possible issue with this and that's that it's not in compliance with the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. Though I'm, I'm not really sure how to apply that fact, um, to the decision. Does, uh, the staff maybe have any, um, thing to say about, about that?
No. Was that a no?
Oh, sorry. It is, sorry, sorry. It is, um, I guess the thing to consider there is that it is legal non-conforming. Um, so it's an existing use.
It existed before the plans were in place.
Right.
All right, I, I guess that, that helps. I, it's just the only thing that seemed a bit off to me, but thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, um, staff is recommending approval of mining permit, uh, MP twenty dash zero five with, um, ten conditions. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, uh, roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, brings us to item ten.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Item number ten is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a recreational vehicle park. This recreational vehicle park will include twenty-two RV sites, a gas station, a convenience store and a bar to serve beer and wine. Um, this property has been in front of, um, this board, um, before and it has been in front of the Pennington County Board of Commissioners on several occasions throughout the years. Uh, as the property stands today, it is zone highway service district. It does consist of fourteen point nine eight acres. It does contain a convenience store that was built in the nineteen sixties per the Department of Equalization records. Um, there is an equipment shed, uh, and a telecommunications tower on this property. There's also fuel pumps with underground storage tanks, uh, some special flood hazard area and access is taken off of Highway forty-four via an approved DOT approach. Um, they have been working with the Department of Transportation on this property, um, at a prior planning commission meeting. That was an item of concern. Um, they are being, uh, uh, excuse me, the DOT is requiring that they, um, remove one of the approaches on that property and improve and widen, uh, the north approach. So that is going to be part of, um, the upgrade to this property. Um, let's see here, I'll get to the plans here. You can see that approach improvement to the north there, uh, in the plans for this. The considerations for a conditional use permit, number one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity and the use is already permitted upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Uh, the properties surrounding the subject property consist of single-family residences. Due to the possibility of increase in traffic on Highway forty-four, there is concern that traffic may become congested as RVs enter the property from Highway forty-four. Uh, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for use is predominant in the area. It does appear that allowing this conditional use permit could have a negative effect on the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property. Uh, that utilities, access roads, drainage and or other necessary fa- facilities are provided. Uh, based upon the site plan, it appears that underground electrical utilities will be provided to each of the sites. In addition, each site will be serviced with water and sewer hookups. The applicant has proposed to provide a means of access to the property off of West Highway forty-four and the internal roadway consists of a gravel driving surface. Uh, the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. It appears the off-street parking requirements have been met. Uh, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed conditional use may generate noise that could be offensive to surrounding property owners. The proposed use could have a negative effect on the surrounding property owners due to the number of RV sites being proposed and the increase in traffic in the area. Um, just some history on this property. Um, the original drive-in eatery, um, there was an original drive-in eatery and cabin on the site. There has been a relocation of the section line right of way on this property. It was originally, uh, general agriculture district, but it was rezoned to highway service district in nineteen ninety-seven by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, there has been some floodplain work on the property. Um, there was a conditional use permit request in two thousand four to allow a temporary campground. Um, it was denied by the Planning Commission in two thousand four. Uh, there was a variance to allow a minimum side yard setback, um, that was denied by the Board of Commissioners in two thousand four. Again, there was some rezoning for the property in two thousand four to highway service district that was approved. Um, and then there was a conditional use permit that was, um, approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand five, but it was revoked in two thousand six as the use was never established. Again, in two thousand seven, um, a conditional use permit was requested to allow a recreational vehicle park in accordance with section three oh six and it was denied without prejudice by the Planning Commission in two thousand seven. And then it was appealed to the Board of Commissioners and was approved in two thousand seven by the Board of Commissioners. Again, it was revoked in two thousand twelve by the Planning Commission because the use was never established on the property. And then again, in two thousand eight, uh, tele- or, excuse me, a telecommunications tower was approved by the Board of Commissioners, um, that is located on the, um, west side of the property. As far as the section three oh six requirements, um, the applicant has submitted all the necessary information to meet those requirements under section three oh six. Uh, with the exception, um, their water right permit has not been approved yet. They have submitted, um, their water right request and they are anticipating a recommendation from the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resources, um, mid-month or mid-this month. Um, so they are hoping to So they are hoping to have that information. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There was just a couple items of concern with the approach, and it appears that the applicants have addressed that concern with the DOT. Staff did do a site visit out there. The buildings are still there. The onsite wastewater treatment system is there and fenced around. So staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with 33 conditions.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask the first question here. It appears to me that this has kind of been an on-again, off-again, on-again, off-again thing here for a while.
Correct.
You have a review of this in, in one year. Is that? Do you think we should reduce that, or do you think one year is what the applicant needs to get things done? I'm just, I want to make sure that if they get started, that they finish. If they're not going to start, it doesn't linger.
Sure. My understanding is this property is up for sale. They are anticipating to close in June. The new property owners want to rehabilitate some of the buildings and make it, I guess, a little nicer and probably get some uses established this summer.
Okay.
So I would say that in a year would probably be appropriate for them, according to their construction timeline, too, that they had submitted to do the resort. Some of that would be a little preliminary, considering some of the work that needs to be done to bring it up with the change in the approach and things.
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Sandy.
So it's under contract to be closed, and the closing to occur in June, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then who put together this plan? The seller of the property or the proposed buyer of the property?
They hired an agent who is actually in the audience, Robert Livingston. He is the one that I, that staff has been working with. And I'm not, I, I am aware that, or, excuse me, I believe that he is working for the current property owner and working with them to get the property sold, if that's correct.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just wondering if, if the buyer wants to do all of these things.
Yes, I believe that is, the sale is contingent on the conditional use permit being approved.
Thank you. That makes sense then. Thank you.
Further questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I, just a quick question. On the, under the conditions, the numbers on, for example, the dimensions of each one of the RV lots and the spacing between the RV lots, I'm just curious where those numbers come from. Are they, are they in, in our ordinance or in, or in the policy, planning of some sort? Or are those numbers, do they come from the plans submitted from the applicant?
Both. In most cases, in other RV parks that we have looked at, those are pretty typical. And same with mobile home parks, the 10 feet apart is very typical between any kind of mobile homes or RVs.
Okay, so, so in other words, these numbers came from the applicant, but they are within, they are the typical spacing and dimensions that you?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Further questions?
If I may.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just have one follow-up. You know, I noticed another one of the conditions is closing that road up to the cellular tower. Is that right?
Sorry, you cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, one of the conditions is closing that road up to the cell tower?
So there was a switchback road that was constructed without permits, and that is the road that we are asking to be off. There's another easement that goes around the other side to the south that accesses there.
Forest service.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought that meant, that that road straight up the hill was going to be closed and then used the road through the forest service, yeah.
Correct.
Further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. The agent for this item is, is in the audience. Sir, do you need to speak on anything or just here to answer questions?
Rob Livingston, ensure I can answer any questions that you have. I do have two questions myself for the staff. Speaking of the switchback trail that's located on, it says to be removed and gated. My question would be that they, they would like to gate it naturally and gate it, gate it off, but to keep it for erosion because it's so steep. The hillside is steep as it comes down. I don't know if you have a picture of that. Oh, sorry. So that, you know, it stops erosion control. So I mean, to remove it would be a little tricky. Not being used, block it off, gate it off totally. I have no problem with that. Just the word removed. I'm not, I'm not sure how to remove that without leaving, you know, some type of erosion control on it. It's just.
You guys want to speak to that?
I guess my suggestion, if you're going to use it for erosion control, does that mean that it's going to be vegetated over?
Not really. It's for rocks falling off.
But I, I guess the biggest thing is so people can't access it.
Yeah, and gate, gate it and block it off totally fine.
Okay.
Gating and blocking it off is totally acceptable and exactly what we want to do anyway. And we don't want the liability neither of somebody going up there. The other one I had was number 15, the existing sanitary holding tank located at east of the garage building to be removed. That tank was discussed with the D E N R, and we're, we are adding this store to it, so that's going to become a lift, a lift pump. So that tank won't be removed, but it won't be used as a holding tank. I just wanted to clarify that.
So that would need to be updated in their, in the, in the list here. And what was the one about the road removal? What item was that?
Well, I just, seven, I think it was. Let me go back.
Nope, not seven.
Thirty-one. You're talking about the switchback?
Oh, yeah, thirty-one.
All right.
Thirty-one, that the trail, you know, be blocked, no problem for non-use, you know, restricted for any use whatsoever. But the word removed, I just want to make sure we can follow that.
All right, we'll work through those items here shortly. I just want to make sure there's no other questions on the items. Okay. With that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 1933 to allow for a recreational vehicle park with 33 conditions. And it sounds to me that 15 would need to be changed. And I guess if there's wording on that, basically the existing sanitary holding tank, I would say be used as a, as a lift station or, or something for a lift station or removed, so we don't leave it open-ended.
Yep, and I would agree with that. That's what I was going to suggest, that the existing sanitary holding tank located east of the garage building be removed or used as a lift station for the existing onsite wastewater treatment system.
Okay, and then proposed wording for 31, that the switchback trail located on the hillside be gated and locked to prevent access? Is that, or do we need to vegetate the road itself? Will it become an issue if we don't take care of it?
I think there has been some erosion on there. I would suggest that they try to vegetate it as much as they can.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is pretty rocky. It's a hillside, but.
It's all rock.
So the switchback trail located on the hillside be gated to restrict access, is that?
Yes.
So the word's removed and the word and would be taken out of 31.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, I, I drive by there regularly, and I have for years, so I watch that road being built, and it's a pretty crazy road. It's a good idea to, to vacate and not prevent access, but you know, what's going to happen there is if it's not properly revegetated, it's going to, it's going to weed infestation, and it may already be, I don't know, but that's exactly the, where thistles grow out here and other weeds. And so I think that it needs to, I would like to have something in there to ensure that it's, that it's, it's properly taken care of, you know, whether it be, I understand, you know, what, certain vegetation is going to be difficult, but at a minimum, the weeds need to be kept from, from growing, and maybe the owner would already do that without that specification, I don't know. But if something could be incorporated to include that, I think it would be, would be wise. I don't know what Mr. Livingston would have to say on that.
He's coming back up to the mic.
Rob Livingston. Well, to address, I think the county has an ordinance to keep the thistle down. Anyway, am I correct? Yeah, so there is a requirement for the noxious weed already in place for that. So if it was thistles or, or anything like that, you know, we would be required to do that anyway.
Does that answer your question, Kathy, or would you, are you, would you like to propose different?
No, it's, that's fine.
Different language.
I'm glad there's a word.
Okay. With that, any further questions on this item before we vote? Okay, staff's recommending approval of conditional use permit 1933. There are 33 conditions noting the changes that were made to item 15 and 31. Are there, are there any others? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Sunny.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Brings us to item 11.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. While Brittany is bringing up the next agenda item, I wanted to provide the commission a list that the Marvin subdivision landowners provided me with their phone numbers. Some of them work. They wanted me to communicate to you that they welcome your phone call. They'll make themselves available so they can be there at their property to answer any questions and provide some of the hard evidence Commissioner Lassiter was speaking to. And with that, I think you all know, but official meetings are open to public. An official meeting is anything that qualifies as a quorum. So you may choose to visit the property in up to groups of three, but no more than three as a quorum would be four.
Okay. Could you just maybe scan that and email it out to the group? Would that work?
Yeah.
You guys good with that?
I'll scan this and, and have it sent out to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kathy.
They also, could they also include Cody Shad's contact information?
No, but we can, we can obtain that for you and provide that to you.
Thank you. Now we're on item 11.
Item 11, this is the rewrite of our construction permit ordinance. This was done by a committee, oh, probably about the same time that our mining ordinance was done. So staff has gone through what the committee proposed. Most of the information is still there. We did kind of cut it down and simplify it a little bit. But this would be to, basically, it's an entire rewrite of Section 507A. We wouldn't have what you would typically call construction permits anymore. This is more associated with stormwater and erosion and sediment control, and it would be more towards those type of permits. So I don't know, Rich, how you want me to go through it. Do you just want me to go through line by line? And then we can ask questions? Or do you have specific questions on each section that we could go through?
I do.
I know that Michelle has some changes under our enforcement area and things, so if there's specific questions, then we can entertain those.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I'd suggest going page by page. And then once we've gone through the whole document, I would like to address very few additional changes to the enforcement for the section.
Okay, so this is, it amends construction permits to supersede Section 507A erosion and stormwater control and amend Section 511 fees to set fees regarding stormwater permits for the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And so this is a complete new rewrite, or is it just the items in, that were, that were listed as commented?
It's a complete rewrite of that section.
Okay. I, I think we could go page by page. It sounds reasonable. Anybody have any comments on, on the first page?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
With the, the only thing is with the roll call vote, that would take quite a while. I think we could clump a few of these, I mean, go through them, but then approve, go through each one to see if there's any questions, and maybe then approve all of them. Would that be acceptable? And we're only doing one vote?
No, I agree with that. We, we would just, we'll vote on, we'll do one vote on the entire thing. My, my thought is just go through, see if anyone has any questions on, on page one of, one of 13.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we won't be able to.
No questions on page one of 13. How about two of 13? Seeing none, hearing none. Page three of 13. I like the idea, I like the type of applicable permits by project. I like that table that provides guidance. So you're not having to infer in between the text. It provides a table that says if you're doing this, you're classified as this, and these are all the permits you need. So I thought that that was a very good thing to add. Questions on page three of 13? Okay, four of 13. And could you speak on the, the deleting of the road grading requirement?
Sure. In the original propose, proposal from the committee, they did have grading requirements for roads. They had some road standards and things like that for width and some of the things that were required if they were building roads, whether they were driveways, whether they were in right-of-ways, whether they were in section lines. And Michelle and I spoke with the highway department, and we felt it was better either in our subdivision regulations and work through, through our highway department versus actually in the stormwater portion of it. Because irregardless of whether you're grading, that's going to be part of your stormwater control anyway. But the actual standards that surround the grading types for whether you're in right-of-ways or section lines is better addressed under our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I also want to mention that we, we did do a great deal of work on the product of the committee, but everything in terms of content that the committee had set forth is in this document. If it's been taken out, we've specifically put a note to that effect and why, such as the road grading requirements. So essentially, all we did is try and, I think we went from 16.
No, we were at 26 pages.
Twenty-six pages. There was a lot of replication redundancy, so I just want to assure you that we eliminated the redundancy, but we kept all the content.
Thank you. Who all was on the committee?
There were representatives, because it was both the mining and construction, so there was representatives from Pete Lean. Mr. Lassiter attended some of those meetings. There was a property owner out from, out around Scenic, Mr. Mike Learcamp. There was a professor with the School of Mines that attended. So there was a pretty large group. Commissioner Haddock was the chairperson for the committee.
Okay. Any further questions on page 14, or, excuse me, page four of 13? Seeing none, hearing none, six of 13. The D E N R updated their standards on the general permit. Is that what happened?
Correct. They had different requirements for inspections, so they changed it. So you can either inspect once every seven days, irregardless of whether you have rain events or not, or you could do it based on the rain events.
Do we, do we define what a functioning rain gauge is?
No.
Does it just need to be one of those plastic deals that you put somewhere?
I, I will tell you, probably 99% of people do the once every seven. I will tell you, probably ninety-nine percent of people do the ones every seven days.
Okay. All right.
The inspections, yes. But no, we don't define that, to answer your question.
I'm sorry, everybody. I think I skipped a page because I had them flipped wrong in my packet. Page five of thirteen?
Just one note, just so everyone's aware, under, on that page, under section B, the notice requirements, because under this section of the ordinance, the planning director will be approving these permits, and Michelle's coming up, because she can speak more to the legal portion of it, but because of some new legislation that went through the legislature and allowing people to basically appeal the decision of an administrative official within fourteen days, we decided to put these notice requirements in here, because otherwise, no one would know when or what was going on in the ability to appeal a decision of the planning director. Did I get that pretty right?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, during the recent amendments concerning CAFOs and conditional use permits, a section of our, the chapter eleven dash two that applies to counties was amended, where it used to say appeal within a reasonable time period. They changed that to, I believe, fourteen days. The problem is, is when you have administrative decisions by a planning director, there's, such as, say, building permit, stormwater permit, adjoining property owners get no notice. There's no required notice under our statutes. So, I'm, we're trying to be a little proactive. I foresee potential litigation around the state where perhaps county approves a CAFO, which can be very contentious, like mining. Property owners don't get notice. They don't start building till fourteen days later, and then when someone complains, they'll say, "Sorry, the fourteen days for appeal is past." And they'll say, "But we didn't know. How can we appeal when we didn't know this was happening?" So, you know, I can't, I know I spoke with Jaqueeb, who's an attorney in Aberdeen, who also is very involved in land use ordinance, uh, statutes, and we spoke to this. So, we put this notice requirement in, just so it has some meaning. I don't think an appeal right is meaningful if you didn't have some sort of notice. So we're going above and beyond what the state statutes say right now, and we thought it was at least appropriate to give adjoining property owners notice. With stormwater permits, you may want to go further. I know you'll be getting a rewrite of our building permit ordinance, and that has the same requirement in it. It's up to you whether you want to limit this requirement to, or whether you want it at all, but whether you want to limit it to adjoining landowners, if you want, or if you want to broaden it to landowners within three hundred feet or landowners within five hundred feet. That's totally up to you. But that is why we put this here, is because we want to give some meaning to the right to appeal. Previously, it didn't matter. When it was just a reasonable time period, someone started building, someone didn't like it, they could come in and appeal, and there wasn't this arbitrary fourteen-day cutoff. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Following on from that, you know, some of these, so I guess here's my question. So when an applicant brings in the application for stormwater permit, is it, is it at that time when you mail out the notices to the adjoining landowners? I mean, is there some, because sometimes these applications can take some time before they ever get decision. So where in, what's the timing in that process in which you would mail out notices? When would the landowners, the adjoining landowners know at the time the application's filed? You know, help me understand that a little bit.
Right, and we would give that information. Michelle and I have spoken about it, how we would do that, and with staff in the office. It would be basically a form letter. It would give kind of a general idea. You know, the abutting landowners, typically, there'll be four, you know, maybe six, depending upon if you're in a higher density area. But typically, they would give that in our office, even with building permits. It's about a seven business day turnaround time, so they would still have that turnaround time. So they would have some time to get it out. The property owners would still have ample time, that fourteen days, in order to appeal.
Also, and we'll, you know, we may go back and look at this a little closer, but if it's similar to the build, sometimes as we progress, I notice things that maybe we missed earlier. So, for instance, in drafting five oh six, that's what, maybe go back and look at the enforcement provisions in this particular ordinance. But the idea is that mailing out those letters, that notice is a condition of the construction per, I mean, the stormwater permit. So, Brittany, the planning department is not going to be approving any stormwater permit unless that notice requirement has been complied with.
Okay. Anything else on page five of thirteen?
May I just follow up, Rich?
Go ahead, Kathy.
So, does it, you know, in some permits, I know at the state level anyway, there's the first round, they need to be determined to be complete, so the requirement, the condition of the, an application for the stormwater permit, do they have to have them in the letter before it's considered to be complete? So therefore, you wouldn't even start working on it until that was met, everything?
So, our office's objective is to get complete applications. We don't process applications until all of the information is submitted. Staff is working on, at this time, basically a checklist. It's similar to what the city does, where you go through the submittal requirements, and the applicant and the planner that takes in the application do the checklist and sign off that everything is complete in there. Otherwise, they'll be asked to come back and submit a complete application. So the processing won't start until the application is complete.
Does that answer your question, Kathy?
Yes, it does.
Also, we'll take, assuming that there's a recommendal, recommendation for approval, and this goes on to the board, we'll make sure it's specified within this ordinance that an application is not complete without proof of mailing. I know that's in the building permit ordinance. I'm not sure here, but we can always add that and propose that when this is presented to the board, if it's not already contained within this document.
Okay. Nothing else on page five? Page six? Seeing nothing, hearing nothing. Page seven? On to eight. I had no further questions on the rest of the document. Does anybody have any questions on the rest of the document? Okay. With that being said-
There was just a couple things that the state's attorney-
Before you take a-
A vote?
Overall vote, there were some, so that was the document that was published, presented to the public. There is no one here from the public who wishes to address this item, but we would make some additional recommendations. They're not, for the most part, substantive. I would recommend removing the stop-work order portion into its own section P and adding "construction activity constitutes a public nuisance as defined under SDCL Chapter twenty-one dash ten." And then, within the enforcement provisions, I added a generic paragraph that makes it clear that the provisions with this, within this ordinance are, they're enforcement options, but we reserve the right to enforce this ordinance under all civil remedies allowed under statute, criminal or civil. So that's very clear that there are other provisions that we, under state statute, that we could enforce. The ordinance and violation is pretty much the same, so is injunction. I did change the abatement, because what we've set forth there is the entire definition of a public nuisance under state statute. I know some may feel we don't want people to have to go look up the definition of the state statute, but a recent amendment highlights why I prefer just to reference the state statute, and that is, the definition that you have set forth there will not be accurate starting July first of this year, because the state legislature recently amended this statute. So, by referencing the state statute and not trying to copy it, avoids us from having to unnecessarily amend our ordinances every time the state statute is amended. And I've noticed recently in our ordinance, we have all sorts of problems within our zoning ordinance, because over the last twenty years, that hasn't happened. Amendments have been made in state statute, and we have amended our ordinances. So we have ordinances such as our conditional use ordinance that actually has an illegal appeal process. So, with that being said, it just identifies public nuisance as that, that's specified under state statute. It gets rid of the cutting and pasting of the definition. Is that it? And then I believe the rest is the same, and we would request approval to be able with these changes, assuming you approve them as part of your vote, we would also request permission to renumber, just do the administrative renumbering below those sections.
Travis, as a person on the committee or that was involved, is there any concerns with the changes that were made? I guess the only one that I saw that people may want to review is the enforcement one, is that? And I didn't read all the way through that. If you could go back to that? Applicable civil and criminal remedies under the laws. What's the purpose of the, I mean, that seems very straightforward to me, like you would have those options regardless, would you not?
I think there could be an argument, if we're saying this is how we're going to enforce it, that these, this is how we've chosen to enforce it to the exclusion of other options. I just, you know, it isn't in my profession. If you're not clear, you end up in litigation. I just want to make it very clear that, for instance, you know, declared hurry relief, there's other provisions that we might take without specifying them. For instance, there's a section state statute that allows the county to get an inspection warrant. If we think people are not complying, we can go into a judge and get an inspection warrant to enter their property. So there's just those little types of things, and I don't want to specify them here, but I'd like to at least reference that. Yeah, we're going to enforce, enforce our ordinances to the full extent of the law.
Okay. Any comments on any of those items? Seeing none here on the dais. Kathy, you? You're on mute.
Yeah, nothing. I have nothing more.
Okay, Jim?
No, no.
Sunny?
No.
Okay. With that, staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero one. Is there a motion?
Oh, and with the changes, with the proposed changes?
With the proposed changes listed in the red line document that was gone over here today?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would be under the stop-work order and enforcement.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item twelve, the county board report.
So the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. There are no folks here from the public, so we're skipping item thirteen, moving on to item fourteen, items from staff.
So we just have the building permit report. You guys have that in front of you. April was a little slower. You guys will see an uptick in May because of the way that we had to accept applications and process applications. It was a little more cumbersome, so there'll be a big peak in May from us issuing them later in the month, because this is based on the dates that we issue them.
Okay.
So.
Let me ask you this. Is there, did the, what's happened in the past two months create a backlog beyond what's normal for you guys, or no?
It's different. So when we get applications, we're getting them via, you know, fax, emails, and not a lot of them are entirely complete, so there's a lot, a little more follow-up. And then in order to receive payment, we have to, like, go through the document, type up stuff, email them or call them back. They have to mail in a check, so it's a little slower process. We actually are working now to get online to take credit cards, so we have our training tomorrow afternoon to do that. So we're hoping that being able to take, like, an E F T payment or a credit card payment will help in that process, because right now with them mailing in payments, and then we're quarantining our mail for twenty-four hours, it's just kind of slowing up the process a little more. But as far as getting applications and our office processing them, we're moving along fairly well.
Is there a backlog, or are you guys able to keep up?
We're able to keep up.
Okay. All right. Anything else with items from staff?
We don't have anything else.
I think I heard you mention it in your introduction, but it is, you are now the director, is that correct?
That is correct.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Items from the membership, item fifteen? Nothing? Kathy? Nothing?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing.
And Sunny?
No.
Brings us to item sixteen, adjournment. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, roll call vote?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.